Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for October the 8th, 2015. And may I have a please, a roll call.
Mr. President.
Here.
Speaker.
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have presentations, and I'd like to call on Chief Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the Board, we've talked recently about how so many good things get done in our township because of the numerous volunteers and people that volunteer so much of their time to help with the programs that otherwise would either not be able to do or we'd have to be using taxpayers' dollars to try to fund either one of which is a good option, but because of their generosity of their time, we're able to do these programs. And tonight, we were just going to honor one special group who made possible and continues to make possible our National Pre-Night Out. I know many of you came to the Pre-Night Out this year and saw that it was the largest crowd we've ever had. Matter of fact, we're almost overgrowing the tot lot there, as you know, and it is because of the great work that they do that we're able to put on such a great program and bring the whole community out in such a fun evening and costing the taxpayers virtually nothing because of our great volunteers. So just wanted to honor them tonight. Wanted to tell you that there was a total of 29 volunteers. They put in 457 hours to make that, to put that together and to man all those different things in there. So that's really an incredible thing. And we have just a few of them here, and what I was going to do if it's all right, Mr. President, I'm going to have them just stand as I call their name, and then we'll give them their certificates outside a little bit later on. But if that's all right, I'd like to call up, ask to stand Estelle Allen, Nancy Borkowski, Mike and Ann Butera, Brad Cooper, Tom Finley, Jan Harris, Rick Hendler, Ken Hoffman, Sue Hoffman, Tamika Holt, Frank Carrigan, Rosita Carrigan, Gina Montgomery, Bill Osborne, Barbara Quinn, Frank Seidel, Janet Seidel, Al Urban, Dan Wall, and Kara Wall. And ladies and gentlemen, these are the folks that really donated so much of their time and made it happen, and I certainly think they deserve a big round of applause. I know that you recognize many of those names. We kiddingly call them, in the Police Department, we call some of them "the usual suspects", and we say that very lovingly and very respectfully. We call them "usual suspects" because it seems like whatever it is that we're trying to do, whatever program in the community, they're there and help us out, not just this one, but many of them, and they're what makes the program go. In addition to that, obviously, there's one person that has really pulled it together year after year, is the person that's in charge of all of our volunteer programs and is a person that we really, we wouldn't have those programs without, and certainly not as successfully without them. And he's here tonight, Commissioners, and we have a certificate from the Board for him for the great work that he's done. I'd like to ask Commissioner Lori Schreiber to come down with that commendation. And I'd like to call up the person that's behind so much of this and especially the Pre-Night Out, and of course, that's Dave Rondinelli.
Well, congratulations. I'm just going to read this. "To Dave Rondinelli, to acknowledge with sincere appreciation your continued outstanding and dedicated service to Abington Township's National Pre-Night Out."
I just want to say that these guys deserved us more than I do, and we have about another half a dozen who aren't even here tonight, but these guys work their butts off every year. I mean, they start at 8:00 in the morning and we don't wrap up till midnight, and we've been doing that for 17 years. All right? So the program's great, but it won't work without people, and these guys are it. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, if the folks that are here, if they want to step outside, they're welcome to do that now, and we'll get some pictures right outside in the hallway as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the Board.
Thank you. We'll just take a moment to let the recipients exit the room. Okay, thank you. We'll resume our normal business at this time. I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, President Luka. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting of September 10th, 2015, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close the eyes, Senator. Thank you, Commissioner Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Thomas Bowman, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item one in our agenda has been deleted, so we'll move on to PW two. This is a settlement agreement for the Delaware River Basin Commission to dissolve solids penalty. I'd make a motion to authorize the acceptance of DRBC's settlement by agreement, including authorizing the payment of $875.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, PW three's also been deleted, so we'll go to PW four. This is the easement for Aqua to replace the existing water main at the Abington Township incinerator property. Motion to approve the easement agreement with Aqua, Pennsylvania, for a new water main at the Abington Township incinerator plant property located in Upper Dublin Township at no cost to the township, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry. Yes, that concludes our business, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1 Land Development, LD 1505 Crest Manor Redevelopment, LP Washington Avenue, Franklin Avenue, and Prospect Avenue. This is a rather lengthy motion to approve the land development application of Crest Manor Redevelopment LP for properties located on the 1600 block, and that's 1602, 04, 06, 08, 20, 22, 26, 28, 34, 36, 40, and 1642 Washington Avenue. Also on Franklin Avenue, 1600 block, 1601, 03, 07, 09, 13, 15, 21, 23, 27, 29, 35, 37, 38, I'm sorry, 37, 39, 41, 45, 47, 51, 53, 59, 61, 65, and 1667 Franklin Avenue. And then on the 1700 block of Prospect Avenue, 1713, 15, 21, 23, 29, and 1731 Prospect Avenue. The applicant proposes to renovate the existing twin dwelling units and construct a new 10-unit structure, a four-unit structure, and a new community building. In addition, one twin dwelling unit will be reconstructed and a new playground will be added. The number of dwelling units is proposed to be increased to 46 units. The applicant proposes to construct an onsite stormwater management system and additional parking. The properties are zoned in the R4 Residential District and AO Apartment Office District in Ward Number Five of the Township of Abington. The motion's subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners?
Have a comment?
Yes, Commissioner Kalowski.
My first comment is, Ben, are you sure you're not the guy that calls the snow closings during the winter? You sound pretty close to that. The other thing is, when we were in committee the last time, we discussed a new playground will be at it. Is that back on or is that taken off? Because we had discussed whether it would be, and then they said they were removing it, and now I see it's back on. So...
Good evening. My name is Joel Johnson. I'm the Executive Director of the Montgomery County Housing Authority, and to the best of my knowledge, per the Township's recommendation, we're willing to remove the tot lot from the application, but we've discussed with our development partner from Penrose Properties, the possibility of placing the funds in escrow for the possible future development of the tot lot.
Commissioner, I believe that's how we left it at the meeting, but they would continue to look into that for safety reasons.
Thank you. Any other questions? I had one on the same heels of that. I was going to ask that same question, and I think the fact that we had discussed removing it because of traffic calming and safety questions related to the planning commission, but that fact was never discussed with the residents, we thought it would be better to possibly escrow the monies for the time being and revisit this at a later date after the safety issues were addressed and the traffic calming issues were addressed. Okay? Any other questions from Commissioners? If there are none, I have one. In your letter to Lay Maitéo... I'll be right with you, Commissioner Jones. You mentioned regarding the minority and women's business enterprises, there was some discussion on the percentages, and I think there was some, not clarity, on what those numbers were. If you could elaborate on that at this time?
Certainly, certainly. The Housing Authority has partnered with Penrose Properties, a prominent affordable housing developer on the East Coast, and I'd like to call Kyle Spees, a senior developer with Penrose Properties, to address that question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you to the Commissioners. Again, my name is Kyle Spees. I'm a senior developer with Penrose Properties LLC, which is a residential real estate development firm, as Joel mentioned, has been procured to spearhead the development process here at Crest Manor. I spoke before the last gathering of the Commissioners, and my apologies for not having all the data on minority women's business enterprise contracting in Section Three right in front of me at that meeting. Please allow me to revise the testimony from that by telling you that the goals Penrose has established for what's referred to as MBE and WBE contracting, minority women's business enterprises, it's 20% contracting dollars as a goal for minority business enterprises, 10% of contract dollars for women's business enterprises, and 15% as a goal for Section Three hiring of business concerns as those terms are defined in the applicable regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Now, that's officially on the record. Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Jones, you had a question?
So if you look at those numbers, if I have a business owned by a minority female and that gets 10%, that's going to count towards both, right? So we're not looking at a 30% goal, we're looking at 10 and 20.
It's my understanding that an organization owned by a minority and female counts towards both goals, so those goals are not additive. If, let's say, that particular firm, a firm that's owned by a minority and female individual happens to be 2% of contracting dollars, that 2% goes towards the 20%, and it also goes towards the 10%. That's my understanding of the way the law works.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address for the record, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I think you all know at this point that I am opposed to this project, think that you should vote no, until you all understand exactly what the finance is. There was a whole lot of chit-chat last time about asking the hard questions and all that, but I don't think any of you got the answers. If you did, my Commissioner surely didn't share it with me. He knows that I'm looking for it. And the problem that we have in safeguarding the monies of the American people is this kind of oversight or lack of it. So if you have, unfortunately, had the kind of day that didn't allow me to scribble out the little example that I wanted to scribble out, but if you literally bought a property for $1,000, and when you were done, that property was worth $2,000, okay? But in order to get that $2,000, you put, you know, let's say, $8,000 in it, okay? That's the picture that you guys, somebody said last time, I think you know who, said that it was irrelevant what the final appraisal is. It's not at all irrelevant, okay? If you take taxpayer money and you build something that costs way less in the end at an appraisal, is worth way less, no matter that it provides housing for the public, but the end product is way less than what you put into it, you are not safeguarding, you're not doing your fiduciary duty to look over the public funds, okay? In essence, those particular properties would be so bloated compared to purchasing properties for residents. There's a duplex in the general area for $239,000, okay? These duplexes will each be worth somewhere around a million when you get done with acquisition and everything else, somewhere between $400,000 and a half a million for each side, so a million for each building. And a building down the street, a duplex down the street that is not ready for public housing, it would have to be adjusted certainly, but that building, both sides, goes for $239,000. So that's not safeguarding the public funds. And who lives in a half a million dollar property and pays one-third of their low-income rent? That's not safeguarding the public funds. And so what we're looking for is for our Commissioners here. I've been told I have to take this to the county level, but you're the ones approving it, and if anybody does know, I'd love to see your hand raised now and tell me that after this meeting, you're going to tell me exactly how much public money went into this project, okay? Because I did ask Mr. Johnson, who's been, you know, very cooperative, but there is not any analysis done anywhere that we know how much public money is going into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from residents? Commissioner Klein?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, the budget for this project is public information?
Yes, it is.
So if the resident that just spoke wanted to get this information, she could file a right to know with your department or with the county? Who would she write, who would she file that with?
That answers...
Excuse me, you're out of order, Ms. Lehman. The speaker is at the microphone. Thank you.
That's correct. The budget for this project is public information. It is, as a matter of fact, been shared with Ms. Lehman previously. We're happy to provide it again, and to your question, Vice President Klein, the request would come, the request would come through the Housing Authority, Montgomery County Housing Authority.
Thank you.
Okay. Excuse me. Ms. Lehman, you've already spoken once.
Is there more to it? Understanding is, do you know how much public money...
Out of order. Please sit down. Thank you.
You're the ones approving...
Mrs. Lehman, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I speak?
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Since I had so much to say in committee, I would really like that opportunity. First of all, what we are approving, if we approve it, the vote hasn't been taken yet, what we're approving tonight is land development. Most of the questions that were asked in committee had nothing to do with land development, and we were aware of that, and you were kind enough to answer our questions. But I would like to speak on the development. I have been, a couple of years ago, in one of these units to visit someone that lived there, and this project is so direly needed. These homes are in great disrepair, and these folks that are living there, there's a little bit of a feeling of depressed and old and tired. So I'm wholeheartedly supporting this project and will be voting for the land development of it because it is so needed. Thank you.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, I am also in favor of this project for reasons cited by Commissioner Myers and others. Certainly, the questions that were raised speak to certain, I guess you could say, encumbrances that are involved in a development like this, that come from the federal level and, to a lesser extent, from the state level. So there are certain expenditures, there are certain things you have to do when you're building public housing, when you're following HUD regulations, there's certain things you have to do and certain monies you have to spend you wouldn't necessarily have to spend otherwise. But the logic presented in the speaker's comments is basically flawed in its assumption that the end product is automatically supposed to be worth what you put into it. There is a lot of public money being spent, and obviously, the value of these homes is not going to be a half a million dollars each. That's flawed logic. Along the same lines, if I want to get $50,000 extra in the sale price of my house, I may have to spend $100,000 upgrading the kitchen. I'm not going to get that whole $100,000 back, but I won't get anything without doing that upgrade. So there's ill logic in that argument. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, President Luka. I actually agree with certain aspects of the speaker's comments. However, I agree with Commissioner Spiegelman that there are flaws. If you look at public buildings, one of the things you have to take into account is, for example, you sink a lot of money into a school. However, a school has a sole purpose, public use, just like these houses will have a specific public use. Because of that, their resale value cannot really be calculated the same way that you would calculate a regular commercial building nor a residential building. So I think to look at that end result is mixing two market sectors that kind of create, for lack of a better term, a mixed analogy. With regards to how we're spending the money and the regulations I brought up before, I agree that we should look at having individuals have pathways to homeownership. We should look at situations where there are programs that will revitalize houses. The fact of the matter is that these homes right now are needed in this community, and we can sit and we can talk and we can deny this until we go ahead and fight Washington, but while we're doing that, there are people who need housing in those homes. So I'm not ready to vote no on this and see other people go homeless or have to live in a property that is in dire need of repair. I think that would be maybe not as fiscally responsible. I think towards a humanity point of view, that would be irresponsible.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. President, that concludes our business for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
Thank you, President Luka. PS one is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2101, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article Two Traffic Regulations, Section 14 Stop Intersection, and Article Three Parking Regulations, Section 25 Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, and Section 27 Parking Time Limited at a Regularly Scheduled Meeting on November 12th, 2015 at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS two is a motion directing the Police Department to donate to the Bikes for Tykes program care of Sussman Automotive. All unclaimed bicycles and bicycle parts which have been confiscated and are being held by the department, and I so move.
Second.
I'm sorry. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. And in the time since the last time I mentioned it, and now, I didn't see one Commissioner even mention there are bikes that are about to be gotten rid of. If you lost one, please check in. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Yes. Victor Creedens, 3505 West Warland Road. I'm very much in favor of the police. They've done a monumental job to find out who had bicycles taken and so forth. They didn't just shrug it off. A lot of time has been spent on this thing. It's a worthwhile project, and I'm behind it 100%.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS three is a motion for Township officials to approve continuation of National Fire Protection Association compliant firefighter, physicals, and wellness evaluations for ATFD members, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS four is a motion to authorize Township officials to accept a grant award from the North Central Highway Safety Network, Inc., in the amount of $3,500, with the Township's matching portion approximately $51, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS five is a motion to authorize Township officials to accept a grant extension from the North Central Highway Safety Network in the amount of $8,000. The Department of Transportation previously funded this program through Buckleup, Pennsylvania, and is now funding this program through the North Central Highway Safety Network, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a whopping one item tonight, and that is PA one, Ardsley Community Education Center lease renewal. This is a motion to approve the Ardsley Community Education Center's lease with the School District of Abington Township for a term of 10 years from September 27th, 2015, until September 26th, 2025, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? And/or staff? Any from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I think all of you know at this point that the amount of monies spent over the course of the contract, 1.7 million amounts to somewhere close to $50,000 a year that we spend on this particular thing, and we did have the school saying, you know, we have it free, and we did have the Township saying, we have it free. So it really isn't free. It costs $50,000 a year for the upkeep. They do a wonderful job running it. It's a great service to the community, but just as a note, it is a center that is subsidized by the Township, so thank you.
Any other comments from residents? Commissioner Klein?
National favor. The Ardsley Community Center, it doesn't cost us $50,000. Doesn't it cost us closer to a quarter of a million?
The actual operating expenses are closer to a quarter million dollars, but most of those costs are offset by rental income from daycare operation at the facility, so our net expense is in the range of $50,000. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor? I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers?
May I just add, may I add to that? I don't think that anyone on this board or in this, our staff, ever said that it was free. I think that what we always meant and said... I think that what we always meant and said, that the lease, for us to lease that property, for us to rent that property for a long extended time, is, I think, a dollar a year. And, that's the huge savings where certainly the school district would, could get a tremendous amount of money in rental alone. And I think that people, sometimes people are stretching the truth, and the truth is, we have always said and always meant, the lease agreement is a dollar a year.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioners opposed.
Just one comment. The Ardsley Community Center is the jewel of Ardsley. All the activities that go on there benefit not only Ardsley, but the entire community. Doug, you do a great job over there, and so does Joan and the entire staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Commissioner Vice President Klein, Director of Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. Before we get started, I wanted to recognize Treasurer Jay Blumenthal, who I believe is celebrating a birthday, and I believe, wasn't the first election that you were involved in was when Woodrow Wilson was president, or somewhere around that time?
That is correct, thank you.
Seventy-five, is that right?
No, that's Mateo's age for me. I'm actually eighty-five.
Seventy-one.
Yeah, but you look better than Mateo.
Seventy-one, thank you.
So, I'd like to call on the Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, for our treasurer's report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. For the month of September 2015, the various township departments deposited monies into Republic Bank totaling one million, two sixteen, four eighty-three, compared the last year of three million, two ninety-eight, four four-three, with a decrease over last year of two million, oh eight, one nine sixty. If you look at the year-to-date, total year-to-date is fourteen, nine eighty-four, one thirty, compared the last year of fifteen, two seventy-six, eight five one, with a loss year-to-date, not a loss, excuse me, a decrease of two ninety-two, seven twenty-one. A lot of this is a matter of timing, so I don't think there's an issue with it. As for monies sent up to Finance Department for Real Estate Taxes for the month of September, we collected eighteen thousand, nine twelve, compared to forty-nine thousand, seven seventy-one for 2014, showing a decrease in collections of thirty thousand, eight fifty-nine. If you look at the year-to-date, we're at ninety-seven percent, balance to collect of three percent. We have October, November, December to hit our average annual mark, which I think has always been, since I've been here, of a balanced collective two percent, so we'll be ninety-eight year-to-date. I don't think that's an issue, which is pretty much the same, or of course, Montgomery County, by the way, the ninety-eight and two percent balance. So, that's my report. Thank you much.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. We have four items on our agenda tonight. FC1, motion to A, approve the August expenditures as previously circulated to the Board in the amount of one million, nine hundred, excuse me, one million, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents, and salary and wages in the amount of two million, three hundred and seven thousand, sixty-one dollars and six cents. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of November 2015, an ISO move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Spohm?
Yes.
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 FC2, motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for August 2015 as previously circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expenses, expense reports were zero dollars and one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents respectively. Eight-month expenses totaled twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC3, motion to approve the clearing fund, the deferred revenue and expense activity and petty cash balances for the month of August as previously circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of August 2015 were six hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, and sixteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirteen cents respectively. Deferred revenue expense receipts and disbursements for the month of 2015 were zero dollars and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and zero cents respectively, an ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC4, motion to designate Republic Bank as the official depository of Abington Township Funds for additional three years, with two, two-year, with two additional years at the option of the township beginning March 2016, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda for tonight, President Luker.
Thank you, Commissioner Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda. At this time, I'll ask for any comments from residents. Name and address, please, and three-minute time limit on speaking. Thank you.
Greetings. Dr. Bob Sklaroff, 1219 Ferrygus Road, one question. I went to the Civic Association meeting, Rital Meadowbrook, and got a crash course around that time on the STAR community situation. That's something like sustainability tools assessment rating. So, I looked on the website, and I noticed in Pennsylvania, there are four entities that are approved, and if memory serves, it's something like Philadelphia is registered, Allegheny County in Abington are members, but then Reddine is three stars, and I'm wondering why we aren't. Have we applied for it? Whatever. Seems like a worthwhile kind of stamp of approval comparable to the insignias that you have behind you. Anyone want to explain that to me?
Yeah, there's a group that's in the process of doing the evaluation for the STAR communities. It's going to take, what was it, about ten months to a year or something, to actually do all the analysis. They have a mentor from STAR Communities working with a couple of volunteers, and at that point, there'll be an evaluation, and then we'll get a STAR rating. But, we're just in the early stages of going through the STAR Communities' evaluation period.
Gracias.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Victor Crevins, 3505 West Moreland Road. I wanted to bring everybody's attention to, two of our police officers were, appeared on Facebook, and we don't hear about it, but they were really commendable for what they did. One of them was Jennifer Doyle, who had her dog Bella helping people on the day the Pope came to Montgomery County at the train station, make sure anybody needed help, and she was out there. And then, there was also the animal control officer, and he appeared on Facebook with a member of the volunteer fire company rescuing an animal that was in distress, and we don't hear about that, but he really, both of these people really did a commendable job.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and I just wanted to speak to some of the comments that were made after I sat down, which makes it difficult to have any real understanding. So, it is you folks who approve that project. There are many stages that that project, the seventeen million, has to go through, and you folks do approve it. Commissioner Myers said the project is so needed, and that is exactly my point. We agree. The project is-
I'm so glad we agree.
-needed, the project that gives people homes. But, this particular project that gives people homes at that expense, when you don't know what the expense is, and I would challenge any one of you to raise your hand and tell me after this meeting, you'll tell me how many public monies went into that, because it's done like derivatives with the sale of tax credits, that we don't know how many tax credits or what amount, and if any of you knows that, please let me know, and I'll ask my commissioner and the President of the Board, please, to get back to me on that, when you actually know how much public money went into this seventeen million dollar project that does have some private money, but we don't know how much, and that the homes, when they're done, will appraise for substantially less than seventeen million as a whole. So, that is my point, and when it was mentioned that it doesn't work exactly that way, and things don't appraise the same way, I understand that. The question is, if you don't know the finances, you don't know how far out of whack it is. Certainly, there is more charge to do public housing and to meet all of the agency rules and regulations, no doubt about that. I understand that fully. But, you would need to know what those figures are, to know if those figures were in line or if they were out of line, okay? So, and as far as the Ardsley School goes, thank you, yes, it was actually presented that we were only paying a dollar, and yes, you know, maybe their intent was not to say that there's a whole lot more money involved, but it was said that way. And so, what we're trying to do, if there was understanding, I would be able to get up afterwards and say, but how about the repairs and the maintenance? But, there's not. We're allowed to say and then sit, and then something that doesn't show the correct picture is said, and so, that's what I was correcting. In Ardsley School, in Roychester, at Alva Thorpe Manor, at the Boys and Girls Club, at all of these places, there are township subsidies, and as residents, we should know what they are. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? If there are none, we'll close with comments from commissioners. Commissioner Zappone, first.
Okay, just a couple of things. The Fourth Annual Ardsley Family Day was a huge success this year, once again, and if it wasn't for my committee, I would have never been able to pull this off. And a thank you to Ed Micolow, the car show was a success, thanks, Ed. And also, Saturday, December 5th at 6 o'clock, we're having the Fourth Annual Ardsley Family Day Tree Lighting Ceremony at the Community Center. And this year, we're going to be partnering with Steve's VFW on December 13th for the First Annual Ardsley Family Day Breakfast with Santa. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have so many people to thank who've helped me recently. I'm just going to thank everybody except Mateo. Just do that as a blanket thing, literally every single person except Director Mateo. Just want to remind everybody, Tuesday, November 3rd is Election Day. In these odd-numbered years, these are the local elections that are often forgotten, we tend to have low turnout, but that's unfortunate, because these are the elections that affect us in our day-to-day lives, on average, more than what happens in Harrisburg or Washington, DC. We have eight out of the fifteen of us, five out of the nine school board directors up for election, we have all the county commissioners and row officers, county judges and judges all the way up to the State Supreme Court, folks who have a real impact on everything from the taxes that we pay to the rights we enjoy. So, please, come out and vote. Polls are open, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. You don't need a picture ID unless it's your first time voting at that polling place. Please come vote, we'll see you on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comment this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers.
This was a very important week for fire prevention, and I had the opportunity to visit Roslin Firehouse last night for their open house. I know, Fire Marshal, this has been a very busy week for you, and it's not over yet, but last night at Roslin Fire Company, it was a huge success, an incredible, maybe a record number of children, and all having a tremendous amount of fun, and so did I.
Thank you. Commissioner Markman.
I had the pleasure of attending the opening of the Penny Pack Trail going into Lower Moreland, and if anyone hasn't been there, if you go to Laramore Park, and you start on the trail there, and you head towards Lower Moreland, you can walk for about five miles, and the truth is, you don't have to go in the country. I mean, it's a beautiful trail, there's a creek next to it, there's trees everywhere, you don't feel like you're anywhere near civilization when you're there. So, if anyone has time, take a walk, because it's an incredible resource, and the more people that know about it, the more valuable our township is, because it's really special. So, if you have time, go out and walk the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Konanowski.
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, tomorrow night is the Edge Hill Firehouse, and it, for some odd reason, always seems like it rains on their parade, but we always have a good time, so I don't think this will be out, but also, Sunday, we're winding up the Fire Prevention Week with a pancake breakfast at the VFW on Jacobtown Road, where I work, and another thing, you see that little pink ribbon there? We were lucky enough to have the three-day walk come through my ward also, and that was a lot of fun, and that was another rainy day. And those, it must be me, but those people had a lot of things out there. Real quick, my thoughts do go out to those people in North Carolina that are suffering so bad right now with flooding. I mean, you gotta, you can't, oh, South Carolina, you can't imagine probably what they're going through, but our thoughts and prayers are with them.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Yes, the Roslin Firehouse last night was so much fun, and what, I agree with you, I think it was the most crowded, that there was just constant flood of people in there, so it was a really good time. So, if you haven't gone to one of the firehouses, you have, well, I guess it's too late for tonight, you have ten more minutes tonight, and then you have tomorrow night's. I want to remind everybody that Roslin Car Show was moved to October 24th, so it's a Saturday, same start time, 3 o'clock, but it had been moved because of the Pope's visit, so now it's in October. Don't forget, mark your calendar for the change date. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Diposito.
Thank you, President Luker. Just jumping off of something that Commissioner Spiegelman said, yes, local elections matter, and sometimes they're very, very close, so please, get out and vote. Also, I can't wait to hear what Commissioner Jones is going to tell us about the McKinley Halloween Parade coming up on October 24th, but I'll let him speak on that, and also, again, folks, when driving through Abington, please, drive like your kids live here. Thank you, President.
Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to send another congratulations to everybody who helped with the Abington Pre-Night Out. We have enjoyed it the past couple of years, and it's a tremendous effort, so just once again, congratulating them. Congratulations to Commissioner Zappone with the Ardsley Family Day, I know that's a lot of work as well, so congratulations. I want to thank the staff as always, but in particular, Mr. Micolow, Mr. Wrigley, and Mr. Powers, departments have been helpful in the past month or so, so I want to thank them, and thank the guys who have been very helpful. I want to remind people about the value of reading, which sounds kind of silly, but in every newsletter I send out, I talk about the reading, and there's new research coming out that reading to your children every night can be the most beneficial thing for them, and two of the critical pieces for children's success, not just in academics but in life, are reading and parenting. So, if you have a parent reading a book, We Kill Two Birds With One Stone, so I want to encourage all parents to keep reading with their children. I do want to mention a couple of events coming up quickly. This Saturday, we have the Fall Festival in Keswick from 12 to 6. There'll be food, entertainment, so come on down, it's family-friendly. The fun continues October 24th with a 22nd Annual Trick-or-Treat Festival down in Keswick Village. Again, they'll be giving out candy, the shops will be giving out candy to kids in costumes, and it's a fun time. I think it'll be getting more and more numbers, we talked about increasing popularity, a couple thousand people come down for that, so it's a great time down in Keswick Village. St. Joseph's Protector is having a food truck and music festival October 23rd, the night before, and local band, Bare Knuckle Boxers, will be there performing, so if you want to come out and have some good music and good entertainment on October 23rd from 6:30 to 10 o'clock at night. The Abington Education Foundation is having a Monte Carlo Night, November 21st, and they're giving out costumes for the best dressed, so those of you who think you look like James Bond, or one of the Bond women, feel free to dress up to your heart's content and be there. And the last thing I want to say is, there's a group in Glenside called Swift, Strong Women in Fitness Together. They recently completed a 200-mile race. 200 miles. They ran all through the night, it was two groups of 11 women, two separate Swift teams, and they went from Maryland to Washington, DC. They would sleep in the van, they would run anywhere from three to 12 miles, they were a person short in each of those teams, so they had to increase their mileage. So, each of these women essentially ran close to a marathon over the course of two days, going from Maryland to DC.[1776.33] It's an incredible feat. I'm happy with my five Ks, and maybe one day, I'll get up to two-hundred miles. But in the meantime, congratulations to all the women of SWIFT. It's a great example for me and for my daughters and for everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Gillespie.
I think Tom covered it all, basically, since our wards are very close. Fire Prevention Week, Peggy mentioned, but the hats are compliments of Weldon Fire Company, so everybody take home your fire hat. It was a great event, and you get rained, Steve, but I get the full board meeting, so I usually can only, I can run in and run out. I'd love to hang out there a while, but I can't do that. Isn't Pail Food Fest on, isn't that coming on the thirteenth? Yes. I didn't hear that mentioned, Commissioner Myers, so I'll mention it. Pail Food Fest. That's a great event. Everybody should be there. That Film and Country Club, five-thirty, correct? Okay. And Full Fest, you mentioned, so that's all I have to say. Thank you. And thanks, everybody sitting at this table that helps me out in Ward thirteen. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Heckler.
Thank you, President Luker. Just a few short comments. I didn't get the chance to do this at last month's meeting, because we were here till, I think, one in the morning or something like that. But I wanted to take the opportunity to publicly congratulate our colleague, Commissioner Tom Farron, who recently was awarded his Ph.D., which is an outstanding accomplishment. I'd like to Secondly, I wanted to thank my fellow members of the Pension Committee, along with Kevin and Manager LaFever, for our marathon session earlier this week. I think we learned a lot. We'll be convening again in a week's time to figure out the path forward, but I appreciate all the time and preparation. I think it was time well spent. Thirdly, there's a lot of excitement in our community about the revitalization of the Abington Shopping Center, and I wanted to remind folks that on Saturday, October seventeenth at eight a.m., Sports Authority will be celebrating its grand opening, so you're all invited to come out to the festivities. I think it's going to be a wonderful morning. And lastly, the Roychester Community House will be sponsoring its annual Oktoberfest this year on Saturday, October twenty-fourth, beginning at two p.m. There will be entertainment, lots of good food, games, and rides for the children. We are in need of volunteers to help for the afternoon. We could set something up for children who are in need of service learning hours, scouts, whatnot. So if you're interested in volunteering, please contact me, and if you're interested in attending, I can put you in touch with the folks who have the tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Heckler. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, President Luker. Commissioner Di Placido, I want to thank you for being. We were together sharing in the McKinley Fire Company. I do want to put out that I think he's being nice, because we didn't have the opportunity to climb up the ladder this year, although one of us was up to the task, one of us had on flip flops, but I guess that's, I didn't, but I didn't want to point it out. So next year, everybody who gets close to a fire truck, when you get the chance to climb up a ladder, don't do it. We have a few things coming up. Commissioner Di Placido did mention the Halloween Parade. That's going to be Saturday, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, from one to three. It's meeting at McKinley Market. There will be a Halloween costume parade that will end up at the McKinley Fire Company, where there will be games, music, prizes, and a good time is had by all. Also, following on the heels of that, will be at the Ethel Jordan Park on November seventh, two thousand and fifteen. There will be a tree planting and repair and buffer put in. There are going to be over a hundred and seventy trees that will be planted at Ethel Jordan Park. Want to thank Doug Wendell for the work that he's been doing on that. The Tucani Frankfurt Watershed has been doing this, and these hundred and seventy trees are going to completely transform this park. It's going to create an environmentally friendly repair and buffer, and it's going to be done for, how many tax dollars? I think that
It was zero?
It's zero tax dollars. So it is a good project, and it's going to be a good thing. If you have muscles or not, come out and plant on November seventh. I'm specifically looking at our seventy-one-year-old. We're expecting you to be out there with a shovel
Of course.
To plant the trees, not to plant yourself. So I It's November seventh, two thousand and fifteen. Okay. Want to thank Ed Micalow and Alfried for work that they've done on intersections and crosswalks in the Ward Three area. And also, finally, we have on October twenty-eighth at the Sisters, St. Basil and Manor Junior, there's going to be a social justice symposium. That's October twenty-eighth from two-thirty to five-thirty p.m. And also, I agree with Dr. Farron, you should read to your children. Research shows that at school and at home, they should be read to every day through high school. Just because they get older doesn't mean you shouldn't be reading to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, President Luker. I just wanted to remind the Board of Commissioners that on Monday, October nineteenth, is that correct, Larry? We're going to have that zoning meeting, where we'll have a zoning workshop with the Board of Commissioners to bring them up to speed on where we are with the zoning rewrite. It's been a little bit of a hiatus, but we're going to try to move this thing along. So October nineteenth, Monday, October nineteenth, at seven o'clock in this room, it is a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. Mr. Ed Micalow.
Yeah, sorry to take the time for a couple of minutes, but I just want to clarify something that was just mentioned by one of our speakers that came to the podium. That speaker said the Roslin Boys and Girls Club is subsidized by the township. That is totally false, and after this meeting, I will speak to the person who did say that, so she can explain to me how she figured that went out. I've been a member of that organization for thirty-four years. I haven't been, started my son when he was six years old. I've been president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, baseball commissioner, soccer commissioner, and coach for the last twenty-six years. The building that we currently are in right now was built, the first building that was built in nineteen fifty-eight, was built, we owned that property, and that was built all volunteer. Not a penny was spent out of Abington Township Funds. This was all volunteer work, and it came out of people's pockets. The building was knocked down in ninety-six in a flood. We waited until after the entire community was back up and running before we decided we went back and began building our own building again. We had, the building was demolished by, for free, by a local entity. We built that, we had basically five people, along with a bunch of volunteers, who spent all their time, nights, weekends, building that building to what it is today. It was all volunteer. There was not a penny of township funds used in that building. So I just want to clarify that point, that, and we get no money, the township does not give us money to run. We do it through volunteer work. We rent the building, we do fundraisers, and any other way we can get funds, we get the funds. But we don't come to anybody and ask them to help us, okay? And we're probably one of the few organizations that does that. There are others. I can't say that we're not the only one. There are others out there that don't take a penny off the Abington Township. It's all volunteer. We do it out of the goodness of our heart. We don't need any recognition for it. We don't ask any recognition for it, but we also don't want anybody to say things that aren't true. So thank you.
Ed, thank you. Excuse me? No, 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 no. Sit down.
No.
Ms. Lehman, sit down, please. Thank you. You can do that after the meeting.
After the meeting.
After the meeting, please. Thank you. Commissioner, Vice President Klein, you have another
Yeah, I also, Commissioner Jones reminded me of something. Also wanted to mention that commissioners receive their budget books tonight, and we'll start our budget meetings next Thursday, October fifteenth. We'll have two workshops, October fifteenth and the twenty-second, and then we'll have the first reading of the budget on November tenth, which is a change from the calendar. We did create a separate meeting for the first reading, which is Tuesday, November tenth, and then subsequent meetings will occur as needed. So, thank you.
And lastly, Ed, thank you very much for that five minutes. Very well spoken, and it had a lot of meaning to it, and I hope people listen, and I repeat, listen to what you said. It was very poignant, it was right on point. Mr. Blumenthal, you have a, you want us to sing Happy Birthday?